Welcome to Ward Talk. I'm your host, Bonnie Gabowitz. And on Ward Talk, we discuss issues and solutions of the city of Ann Arbor, Michigan. Today, we are joined with Julie Grand from Ward Three. Julie, welcome to the show. I haven't seen you in quite a while, so it's a pleasure to see you.
Thank you, Bonnie. It's a pleasure to be here with you today.
Yeah, and I know you and your councilmen, the other council members have been so busy with so many different aspects of running the city. And I understand that several of the issues that we have to talk about deal really with the whole city rather than the specific ward. So we're going to jump right in and talk about city issues.
That's great.
Great. So let's just start with, there's a new zoning designation that has been worked on for a while. And it has been mentioned on previous shows. So what's the latest on that?
So we passed our first T C one zoning district, which I'm really excited about. It's not in our ward, it's in Ward Four, so it's Ward adjacent. But it was really a great pilot and a great way to kick off this type of transit oriented zoning. So this is a zoning designation that will enable more dense development along our transit corridors. So ideally, it means that you can be car free or car light, that the housing, because of its location, and the need for less transit will be more affordable to you. And we're hoping that we can build some of these areas outside of the downtown that can be not only transit friendly, but also have amenities that are walkable. So we can create these, we call 20 minute neighborhoods where you can walk to a lot of goods and services, entertainment, where you can really live, work, and play in a small area or get to others really easily.
And it really sounds like your interest is twofold and maybe more than that. One is the affordable housing, really, and helping our workforce have a place to live so they don't have to travel to go to work. And of course, the other part is developing businesses as well.
Sure. I mean, and there are even more benefits than that, right? There are environmental benefits as well. So it's in line with our A two zero carbon neutrality goals. But if we think about pre COVID, having 85,000 people commuting into the city and knowing that many of them would like to both live and work in Ann Arbor, not everyone. But we do want to be able to present options that are, well, maybe not affordable for all, affordable for more. And we know with the housing crisis we have, we need to provide a range of different types of options for housing. So this is another option that we hope to replicate throughout the city on our other transit corridors. So Stadium, Washtenaw, Packer, Plymouth, Jackson Road, potentially.
So there are quite a few different areas you're looking at, too.
We certainly hope so, but this was the most obvious one to start with at State and Eisenhower.
The next topic is, we have right now an interim city administrator who was hired for about a year, I believe. And so I understand that you are now in the process of looking at hiring a new city administrator that will be a permanent administrator.
Yes, yes. So Melon DeHoney came on as our interim city administrator. He has, he was very impressive during his interviews and he went through actually a fairly rigorous interview process. But I think he has just exceeded expectations across the board. He's a fantastic listener. He comes to us with a wealth of experience. My experience working with him is that he listens, he asks follow up questions, and then he tends to draw on that experience and have really fantastic ideas about how to solve some of our problems. So if we look, for example, at our roads and we have on our agenda coming up next week, a bond to accelerate our road reconstruction. We had a plan, that plan for a number of reasons did not come to fruition. So our roads are in terrible shape. And while we can borrow money relatively inexpensively, we want to try to accelerate that process because we know that having roads in this condition is not just bad for drivers, but it's unsafe for all users, right? Cyclists, pedestrians. So we want to get that going and we want to thank Mr. DeHoney for that.
So it sounds like he raised the bar and you have a big job to do finding someone of equal prominent abilities. Will this be a nationwide search?
No, we've actually already decided to move forward with hiring him on a permanent basis and we're negotiating his contract.
Oh, that's wonderful.
It is.
That's wonderful. That's, that's one thing to check off.
Yes. There's, with such a strong internal candidate, we actually got advice. I'm on the City Administration Committee and Council Administration Committee. And we, the advice we got that was such a strong internal candidate, we wouldn't get anyone serious applying from outside the city. And we didn't need it. He's incredible.
Let's talk a little bit about downtown. I know the council has been wanting to create more affordable housing downtown. And you do have some of your own buildings that you actually own. And this has been also an ongoing project. So what is the update on that?
So we are, after a long time and really careful analysis, we have a number of properties that we own downtown. So we actually own the land. And that makes it much easier to leverage money for affordable housing because we don't have to deal with the cost of the land. We own the land already. So one of those is that Fourth and Catherine that's moving forward in the Carytown area, which is a great place for some affordable housing. And then the bigger piece of land that has a long history, if someone wants to look at the packet and read about it, it's pretty fascinating, that we're moving forward on the old Y lot property at 350 South, what is it? William Street. So, or sorry, 350 South Fifth Street. And, and that's going to have at least 100 units of affordable housing, if not more. We're cooperating with the triple ATA, so there'll be more room for their transit as well. So it'll be housing right next to transit in the downtown. Lots to be excited about with this property.
Yeah, and, and I know the Y lot has been in discussion for years now. So it sounds like, you know, you're really moving forward with the plan at this point.
Finally, yeah. Like I said, this goes back decades and it is important to have that housing. You know, it was, it was a site of a different kind of affordable housing that we can't build anymore. But we'll really be, if you think about 100 units, that's more than 100 people that will be housing, right? So.
Hundred families. Yeah, yeah. We have been discussing for the past couple of months, the funding that the federal government is sending. It's over $24 million and it's called ARPA. And I know you had a survey of citizens making suggestions. And you have since gotten input, you have made some adjustments in what you originally were considering, how you would distribute these funds. So at this point, you already have decided how much money would go to certain areas. And I understand with the arts, the council decided a certain amount of the money, I think it was 200,000.
Yeah, we'll go to trauma informed.
Would go towards a special program. Could you tell us about that?
Sure. So, so it was really important, I think, from the arts community that they, that we be funding artists. And I think there are a couple ways that we're doing that. So one, since it is our money and these are supposed to be recovery funds, council member Song, who's one of my colleagues, came forward and I was happy to support her in those efforts to have some of the money be used for trauma informed programming. It doesn't mean that you need to have a certification. It just means that art programs, movement, writing, that we can hire artists to work with some members of the community, youth, BIPOC individuals that have been most harmed by the pandemic. So that's, it's fairly broad. It just is meant to encourage that kind of activity that would probably happen anyway, I would hope. And then we also have the guaranteed income pilot that's in there as well. So we heard from the arts community, you know, sometimes we just need some, some money to help people who've been most severely impacted. So, so this would give money to 100 families for one to two years. And we're the first community in Michigan to do this pilot, but we know a lot of other, of our peer cities we're watching. So I'm pretty excited about that. And we heard loud and clear when that was potentially on the chopping block, that people in the community wanted to see us implement this pilot. So it's a nice mix of some infrastructure, things like the bridge that goes through Gallup Park that connects Border to Border Trail, Universal Access Playground, some other amenities. And, and then a lot of social service funding so that we really can focus on recovery.
And at what point will the money start, start flowing?
It needs to be spent in the next few years. And true to what I was saying about our, you know, soon to be not interim and hopefully permanent city administrator, Mr. DeHoney, he told us right as soon as we passed those ARPA funds, he said, okay, so in the next few weeks, staff will be working on a plan and we'll be giving you a timeline. It can't all be spent in the first few months, right? It needs to be spent by 2026. So staff is going to give us a plan in the next week or so to let us know about anticipated timeline.
Well, when we come back from our break, we will continue with some items about the city of Ann Arbor. We welcome your comments, your input, your questions. You have three ways of being in touch with us. You could email us at ctn@a2gov.org. You could also follow us on Twitter at twitter.com/ctnannarbor. Another way to be in touch is to watch us on YouTube at youtube.com/ctnannarbor. And then you can follow not only this program, but other programs on CTN at your convenient time. We'll be right back.
Catch up on FYI and other CTN programs at a2gov.org/watchctn.
Hello, we're back with Ward Talk. I'm your host, Bonnie Gabowitz. We're talking with Julie Grand from Ward Three and we are discussing issues of the city of Ann Arbor right now. We've got a lot on our plate right now, including the fact that it's early spring. Let's just talk a little bit about the possibility of having a new bond that would accelerate funding for road repair. We've, the whole state of Michigan, of course, has had difficulty with keeping up with the road repair. But how would a bond, an extra bond actually make a big difference?
Sure. So, so having this bond would enable us to do approximately three times the amount of road construction that we would be able to do otherwise. So we know that our roads are now meeting our goals of being where the, you know, vast majority of our roads are in, are in good, excellent shape, far from it. So, so this is an initiative to get at, while borrowing is still relatively inexpensive and construction costs just continue to go up and up and up. So it's not going to be, even though it seems shockingly expensive now, we don't anticipate that that problem's going to go away. So in bonding for some money now, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I just want to add that the city office has done an extensive evaluation of all the streets of Ann Arbor. I've actually personally seen the list in the office where you have designated all the streets that need repair and to what degree they need repair. So this is a very specific plan.
It is. And, you know, we had a very specific plan and, and we were making the shift that I was very supportive of of moving not just from letting a road fall into total disrepair and doing preventative maintenance, which extends the life of the road for less cost. But we just, even with the best of intentions, that plan was not coming to fruition. So we really just have too many roads that are in terrible shape and, and need to take some more extreme measures to address it. We're also hoping that there'll be a greater influx of money from the state. So if we bond coupled with hopefully more money coming down from the state, we can finally get at this problem that we've known about for a long time.
So would this bond be over a certain period of years to pay back?
It, that work. Yes, it's on our, I honestly, the packet on Monday, there are details in there for the, for the April 18th meeting. But there's a whole schedule of paying.
So this is a topic we can plan on seeing being discussed in future board council.
And Monday's meeting on the 18th of April, yes.
Right. And a question just came to my mind. How does this, does this have anything to do also with the drainage problems and replacing the pipes, any pipes?
That is totally separate, totally separate, but also really expensive infrastructure problem. Fortunately with that, because we do have stormwater fees and, you know, we have just old infrastructure in Ann Arbor. We have 100 year old pipes. We have a water treatment plant that has a section of it, well, very beautiful, is in an Art Deco style because of the age of the building. So we're, we're going forward on different front, stormwater, water. We do unfortunately have to increase rates, but hopefully at a, at a lower rate, we had, you know, kind of a big bump. And now we're hoping to smooth that out. But we have this major infrastructure that we have to pay for and it is truly essential.
And being early spring, I know you're working on the budget. The budget, just to review, is a two year plan. But every year you do look at it and see what needs.
Yes. So this is, this is the easier year this year, the odd year, yes.
So is there anything new going on with how the budget is being used?
Um, yeah, we're, we're continuing to make pretty major investments in our A two zero plan and our sustainability plan. So I think you'll see some adjustments in the budget that if we really are going to get to carbon neutrality, it means we have to transition vehicles to electric, right? There's some funding in those recovery dollars as well to put solar in buildings. So we, we have excellent, excellent work being done in sustainability, but it means that there'll be some more money put towards that. There's also a different approach with our new city administrator, really thinking about some different pillars, with sustainability being one of them. But just, just a different framing. And I think one that will lead to probably some more accountability, but also just a shared understanding and a little more commonality between the departments of the city.
So what is the timeframe of finalizing the budget?
Yes, we're obligated by the charter to vote on the budget the second meeting in May. If council does not approve a budget, it just goes to the city administrator's budget. That's never happened. This will be my eighth time around. So we'll vote on a budget the second meeting in May, usually sometime in the AM.
And being the month of May, you mentioned the month of May. There's something special going on in Ann Arbor that is, I believe, optional.
Yes.
Called No Mow. And this is something new, just for the city of Ann Arbor. Could you give us a little background on No Mow?
Sure. So No Mow May is just an effort that was passed for our last council meeting that encourages residents to not mow in May or mow less in May. I've gotten some questions from residents, but what if it would break my lawnmower if I let my grass grow? We don't want you to break your lawnmower. But, but what we do want is to enable things like dandelions and other types of flowers that encourage pollinators. So we just, we know that we have an issue in Michigan and across the country with, with pollinators and we want to encourage them. So keeping your lawn a little longer in May, so long as it's not obstructing sidewalks for safety, we'll still be doing some mowing in our parks, probably a little less. But you know, if you're, if you have someone playing a reckoned sport in a park, we, we won't have them, you know, with grass up to their, you know, knees. But we do want to try to give our pollinators their best chance. So that's what No Mow May is. A lot of people are excited. They're looking at it as an excuse not to mow their lawns and they're pretty happy about that.
Yeah. So this is something that might continue the next year if it's.
I think so. Yeah. Yeah, it seems, it's getting more attention than I thought it would and I'm pleased to see that.
Right. And, and also you talked about the budget. We talked about governing. Just to mention that you now have live in-person meetings at the city building.
We do.
Can, they can still come to the meeting.
They can come and they can also call in. So we're, we're using a hybrid format, which is great. I hope that we continue to do that indefinitely. So it means, I think it just makes it a lot more accessible for the public to be able to have the option of coming in in person, but also be able to call in from the comfort of their home to participate in a public hearing or public comment. So that's great.
Okay, now, how many years have you been on the council?
Almost eight.
Wow.
Yeah.
You're a veteran. So considering your long experience in the council, I think of past eight years, all the changes we've been through. What, how has it been for you? What is your experience? And what is your perspective on your participation and what's happening with, with the city and how the council runs?
Sure. So, you know, I'll always acknowledge to people, this is a really unusual hobby, right? It's not, it's not for everyone. We, politics has gotten in some ways more difficult to participate in, more tribal. But at the same time, I wouldn't give back these years for anything. It truly is an honor and a privilege and one of the best types of community service I could imagine doing, serving on the city council. I've had some incredible colleagues, worked with just wonderful expert staff at the city, gotten to serve on a lot of committees where I've worked with dedicated volunteers. And I've gone to work on policy that, that is important now, but also as we look to the kind of city that we want to have in the future, that will be more inclusive. You know, we're, we have some serious problems. We have, we're in a housing crisis. We have some major infrastructure needs. But, but we're really fortunate. We're, we're better off financially than most. And we've been able to work on policies that, that people around the state and around the country look to us to lead. And I've taken that responsibility quite seriously. So it, you know, it was something that, that I, it has been such an honor to be able to help make policy for the city. It helps our constituents make some small and hopefully significant differences in some people's lives. And then when we passed the charter amendment a few years ago, that changed it from two to four year terms. It, it was done so that you would take, you know, really think about, okay, do I want to make this commitment for four years? And it, it gave me pause to think about, you know, eight years is one thing, 12 years is quite another. And I was fortunate to have a woman that I'd worked with when I served on the Human Rights Commission as a council liaison, Aisha Ghazi Edwin, who now lives in my ward. And, and she wanted to run. And when you find a progressive, fantastic, super qualified person who is interested in running for your seat, that made the decision to step down that much easier. And also I just feel, I don't think I would have said this two years ago, but I feel really great about where the city is at, where the council is at in terms of looking towards the future. We had these five new council members come on now about a year and a half ago. I've been able to work very closely with all of them in different ways. And I feel confident that, that they're ready to really make this council their own. And with, you know, with some new members and, and take on those more senior roles.
And I know from past experience, talking to other council members, they, they have a very special bond with the people who live in their ward. And the fact that, you know, you do your job based also on the input you get from the citizens who live in your ward. If you want to say anything, give a shout.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you know, Ward Three is, it's a diverse ward. It's, it's an exciting place to live. There've been some great changes that have happened over the last eight years. It's been fascinating to see the things that stay the same and, and, and those that change. I think we're really ready. As a, there's, there's just so much to offer on the south side of Ann Arbor. So, and we do depend on those, those residents to be our eyes and ears to let us know what we can do better. And, you know, we're, we're really fortunate to live in a, in an active community where people let us know what they think. And that's great. I think sometimes there's a misunderstanding about representative government, right? That there's a difference between listening and agreeing always. So they're not the same. But, you know, and I think it's, it's an important job for someone who's an elected official to take information from their residents, but also from expertise on staff, look at their own values. Because all of our policy decisions and, and our budgets are moral documents. We hear that all the time and I really do believe that to be true. So I think I've, I've seen, one of the things that I love that I've seen over the last eight years is I think people in Ann Arbor are looking more to what's happening nationally in terms of progressive values and really wanting our city to strive to be that kind of place. We don't always get there, but, but we're trying in what we do. And that we do want to make this a community where people can, can live and work. And that's, that's welcoming to the diversity that makes us great.
Well, I want to thank you so much for your time and I wish you well and happy spring.
Thank you. Same to you. Thank you for having me.
This is Bonnie Gabowitz for Ward Talk. We want to make sure that you can connect with us. You may email us with your questions, comments at ctn@a2gov.org. You could also follow us on Twitter at twitter.com/ctnannarbor. You can also follow us on YouTube if you'd like to watch these segments and other segments from CTN, Thanks for joining us. We'll see you next time. Thanks for joining us. We'll see you next time.